Welcome to the August 30th, 2021 Kirkwood School Board Meeting. I call this meeting to order. I would like to explain real quick for our community why we're holding our meeting in the boardroom rather than the north cafeteria, capitorium. We intended to hold the meeting in the north capitorium to accommodate more people, but we received feedback that people were, who were attending via Zoom could not hear very well. So due to the audio at the north, north capitorium, we'll be holding our meetings here in the boardroom with limited seating for the public while also accommodating, you know, the public while also continuing to stream our meeting via Zoom. And we're trying to ensure that we're offering a good option for both our community members in person as well as virtually. And we appreciate your understanding during this time. Mr. Frost, at this time, can you please lead us in the pledge?
Please join me on our pleasure of leaving.
My pleasure to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, routine matters. First up is public comment. I would like to take this time to go over some guidelines with regards to our public comment and participation. The process of public comment is governed by board policy, specific policy, BDDH. Everyone will be given three minutes to speak. We ask that you are respectful in your comments and that you do not use specific names. The board does not respond to public's comment during the meeting. If a response is needed, the superintendent or board president will get back to you. And we're still accepting comments submitted virtually. Those comments will be read after all in-person comments. We will allow 30 minutes for public comment. At this time, we have one poll comment for in-person. Mr. Gary Bogerman, Jr., can you please come?
Okay, can we not talk without this so we can actually understand what I'm saying?
Yes, we're asking that you please keep your mask, mask on.
Okay, I've never seen that at a school meeting that the speaker has to have the mask on. So who, where's the timer before I start or do I need, can I see it or do I need to set my hour? Okay, perfect.
Yep, that can all break, so.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. All right, so I'm Gary Bogerman, Jr. I have a five-year-old daughter that just started in Kirkwood Schools. My first question is, can't use names, but for the superintendent, and I might have missed this, but I didn't see that the board voted on the mask policy. So I mean, I know I can't get an answer now, but my suspicion is that you scratch their back, he scratched yours, and what does that mean? I'll be clear. So the board, as far as I know, and I'll, I can't be correct because nobody wants to speak and that's not the policy and I get it. But to my knowledge, the board is the only one they can get rid of superintendent. I might be wrong, that's the way I read things. And if the superintendent doesn't go to the board for a vote on masks, what does that mean? That means that none of these board members have put themselves on the record as to how they feel about masks. And then what does that mean for the superintendent? For the superintendent, that means he keeps the board happy. And if the board doesn't have to be put on record, they're certainly not going to get rid of the superintendent because the superintendent scratched their back and said, I'm not going to put you on record. Okay, so I, I'm, that's a question that I'd like an answer to, and I don't know if it can be done. I've asked other questions, I've never gotten any responses. I, I talked to another board member, I can't mention names, and my understanding, based on what, yeah, you say, it's basically what another board member just said, started this meeting, that there would be some responses, I've never gotten one response on any of my questions. I know it doesn't happen in this forum, I get that. So then, let me fast forward now to the last part of this because it's all about my daughter. Imagine you're a five-year-old kid. You've been at Westchester Elementary one time before you have to go to the school there full-time for nine hours a day in a mask. You were dropped off to everybody else that's in a mask at a scary place that's a new place, and we are asking our kids to be dropped off in that situation? And for what? To protect them from COVID, these masks, these masks that all of us have on, not a doctor, but you guys have paraded out a whole bunch of doctors that, that fall lockstep with exactly what you want to hear. But I don't see anybody from the other side, there's a Dr. Benedict that I really hope that you guys listen to and then take account of him in one of your closed board meetings because he's willing to come and speak to you. But what I can't understand is the fear that you would instill in a kid over, over the fact that I don't see much science behind these masks. And when I'm talking about what I've heard from Dr. Benedict and from people within the medical realm, is these masks going to stop 50 microbes? COVID is 0.08 microbes, what are we doing here? This is a controlled activism, that's what we're getting, that's what we got going on.
Okay. Okay, and at this time, there are no more in-person comments. And so, Ms. Heinrich, do you have any virtual comments?
Yes, I do have virtual comments.
Okay, thank you.
The first one is from Chad Alsworth. COVID-19 mask mandates. As a citizen of Deshers, Berkeley Manor neighborhood and parent with children in Kirkwood School District, I plead with you about stopping the mask mandate. According to the HOW spread of COVID-19 within educational settings may be limited, limited quote and link below. According to the American Health Rankings Org, teen suicide in Missouri is increasing, increasing annually over the last five years, 15.4% in Missouri with a 4% rate of change increase in white male teens in Missouri last year alone. Humans are social creatures. Hiding behind a mask limits growth opportunities for our younger generation. This loss of social engagement, hiding behind masks and fear of social contact will cause a definite shift at the success of our younger generations for the remainder of their life. A respectfully voiced my support for a ban on mask mandates for all students and teachers. The districts across the country are presented with an incomplete data set and further, as I am not a medical expert, I will cite one, Dr. Van Stock, and he cites the website, in saying the CDC's recommendations are contrary to science, including the NIH studies which show that masks do not work. We either providing an older generation are irreparably harming our kids. Please, please, please ban all mask mandates, this does not help our kids or community. Thank you kindly, Chad Alsworth. The next comment is from Chris Deluge. As our children grow, my wife and I have been working hard to ensure that we provide the best education available as with any parent. When we purchased our home in the Frederick Lane subdivision, we were incorrectly advised that our house was in the Kirkwood School District. I accept a responsibility for not conforming as this was our first home purchase and did not have children at the time. When checking the district map, I found that our lane is roughly 80% in Kirkwood and the north tip is in Webster Grove. I was perplexed by this gerrymandering. Why split up a neighborhood like this? Our portion of the lane that sits in Webster stands to lose out on the very thing that makes the neighborhood the neighborhood. Our children and others around us will not have the chance to bond with the other young kids as classmates and further hurts the camaraderie. Parents often benefit from having children in the same school or classes. I am writing today to inquire about this boundary issue and how it could be reviewed for the lane or for our home. Our Glendale Alderman advised the district map to find Kirkwood Schools as last at Berry Road, but the map shows otherwise. Being excluded from the Kirkwood School District could also have an effect on the appeal of our home when families are considering moving. At least three, at least three of the newest families in our lane came from other areas of Glendale, which shows the desire to be in this area and school district. I also uncovered that at least one home in our lane was granted an exception to this in the district. Also, our zip code being 63122 adds to the confusion of where we fall when it comes to district taxes, et cetera. Also, it is worth noting that I am unable to find any other instances where the district map severs a neighborhood or subdivision. I plan to attend the meeting this evening virtually and hope that you can take into consideration our situation and provide some options as we would very much like to be a part of the highly rated Kirkwood School District. Thank you for your time. Next is Jen Coker. Topic, culture and climate related to sexual abuse, misconduct, and inappropriate behavior. Good evening Superintendent Ulrich and the Board of Directors. I am a stakeholder in our district, being a 29-year resident and a longtime advocate about improving the district's adherence to IEP excuse the rules for regular education teachers as well as its use of IEP-based behavioral interventions to minimize the disciplinary removal that of a most egregiously affected black boys with IEPs. This evening, I am advocating about the district's response to a devastating Title IX compliance audit that was indirectly about the district's culture and climate regarding sexual abuse, sexual misconduct, and sexually inappropriate behavior around children. I have some concerns. It is notable that the audit was done by a firm whose mission is, according to its website, to protect your business. Although the firm does not reveal the names of the organizations for whom it, whom it has done investigations, its representative training clients do not include any K through 12 schools. The audit examined information related to 30 accused staff members who acted out over almost 50 years. Was the audit report made available anyplace other than the district's website? Was it emailed to students, families, and alumni with a description of its findings? Stakeholders need to know because the Google search reveals that what has happened in Kirkwood is among the highest number of perpetrators acting out over close to the longest number of years of the cases that have been brought to light in this country. I am asking that you reassure students, families, alumni, and the community that none of the accused is still working or volunteering for the district. If people are still there, then please tell us how many and what you are doing to prevent recidivism through the Wellness Committee or other activities. The audit had recommendations that involved improving awareness among stakeholders of grooming behavior and reporting processes and improving the district's investigations and record keeping. Given that the audit started stated that four of the 30 acted during the 2010s, I looked at policy GBH, which examines staff-student relationships and describes grooming behavior. It has not been updated since 2012, and it does not include what is the best practice language surrounding boundaries and boundary violations. Are you willing to update the policy since it has been ineffective? The audit also recommended trainings about staff-student relationships. Please make these the assemblies that are open to parents and open to the community with a speaker who is a survivor, a trainer who is expert in the field, and a sign-in sheet to keep track of who is knowledgeable of the information. I appreciate what the district is trying to do, but given the scale of what has been going on, it's not enough. Thank you for your consideration of this point of view. Next one is Anna Schellenberger. Looking at the list of 30 alleged offenders reported to encompass, not including those not yet reported, it is vitally important to confirm that, one, none are still employed with the Kirkwood School District. If some still are, why? How many? Plus, how does the KSD plan follow the encompass resolution, recommendation to seek eternal, to seek external oversight for these alleged offenders? As well as in general for a transitional period as encompassed suggested during the open portion of the 618 2021 board meeting. Given the trust issues with the KSD culture, first process, encompass quantify. Two, of these 30 are any still involved with minor children, example, under 18, be it as teachers elsewhere, exercise instructors, youth groups, leaders, et cetera. If so, what is the plan mandated or otherwise to report this allegation to those organizations? Next is Brian Carlson. A genuine formal public apology is necessary to the survivors of 50 years of systematic sexual abuse. Perpetrators of sexual abuse must be held accountable as must those who protected them, covered these abuses up, did not report, coerced others into not reporting, et cetera. No perpetrator of sexual abuse of students should be currently hired by the district or schools, and the community must know that this is so. It is apparent to many that at least one of the 30 people named on the independent investigation is currently hired and is in a political position. This person must be fired. Trust can only be restored in the community by strong and sincere actions to mend this five-decade-long violation of the trust parents put in teachers and administrators. Their children's lives are in the hands of these people, and many of these people severely hurt a huge number of childrens collectively with various forms of sexual abuse. No more lies, no more hiding, no more cover-ups, no more face-saving actions. And that's the last one.
Thank you. And, and thanks again for all the public comment, and like I said, if there are things that need to be followed up on, Dr. Ulrich and myself will, will do so. Okay, moving on to 2.01, approval of the agenda for August 30th, 2021 regular meeting. Do I have a motion in the second? Okay. All those in favor of approving the agenda for August 30th, 2021 regular meeting, please raise your right hand and say aye. All those opposed, motion to approve the agenda passes. Okay, moving on then to 2.03. Do I have a motion in the second to approve the minutes for July 26, 2021?
Absolutely.
Okay. All those in favor of approving the minutes for July 26, 2021, please raise your right hand and say aye. All those opposed, motion to approve the minutes passes. 2.03, approval of minutes for August 16th, 2021. Do I have a motion in the second to approve the minutes? Okay, all those in favor of approving the minutes for August 16th, 2021, please raise your right hand and say aye. All those opposed, motion to approve the minutes for August 16th, passes. Moving on now to 3.01, awards and honors. Ms. Dietrich, do you have any awards and honors that you would like to share with us?
I do.
Great, thank you.
Um, so this is a part of the opening day exercises for staff that took place on August 17th. The Kirkwood School District staff brought over 750 food and personal care items. This will support over 30 families within our community. With the school back in person every day, we look forward to sharing more celebrations with you and meetings near the future. And also, I'm excited to share a update from our KSD Facebook page. A post on August 24th asking the public to share their first day of school photos is the second highest post as far as engagement and interaction on the KSD Facebook page. This is the second only to a 2012 post announcing the Kirkwood Football Pioneer that State Champions. The first, this post netted 3,209 engagements, 5,452 people reached, and 154 comments. Currently, the KSD Facebook page has about 6,000 followers.
Thank you. Speaking of back, back to school, you know, I, I think it's just a time to really celebrate that we have a successful first week back to school. I, I think that we have a lot to be thankful for, thankful for our administration and our teachers and our students. It's an exciting time. Okay, moving on to super. Yeah. Moving on to superintendent reports. Just a quick reminder, board members, please direct your questions to the chairperson so that we can give everyone the opportunity to speak and that we continue to have an orderly meeting. So at this time, Dr. Ulrich, class size report.
All right, thank you very much, President Andrews. And just want to give the opportunity for Dr. Fields to get settled. Thank you for those words. It was a smooth start to the school year, a very positive start to our school year. And as I told our leaders, the, we never take that for granted. It is not an easy thing, in particular, this year, as we've tried to get back, but I can tell you that I've been in every school, had the opportunity to be a crossing guard for a couple of mornings along with the rest of the cabinet. And really, just the, really, just the, just the happiness that our parents have to be able to be back in person every student, every day, has really been, just really been very gratifying for me, you might imagine, as a superintendent, having been here a year now. It's looking closer and closer to normal. And obviously, we're very excited about that. And as part of normal, we have Dr. Fields who's going to update, get an updated class size report for, for the school year. Just a reminder to the board, this is a matter of course, that the board can expect another report from Dr. Fields in September, and then he will pass the baton, so to speak, to, to Dr. Bailey to talk about enrollment. So, Dr. Field, are you ready?
Absolutely. Good evening, Board of Education and Community, as well as colleagues. I'm before you to provide you an update with the 2122 school year class sizes. As Dr. Ulrich already alluded to, next month I will have a final report, and then Dr. Bailey will take over. All class sizes and data that is provided in front of you was effective of Infinite Campus as of August 25th, 2021. What you have in front of you are the class size guidelines. You have the DESI desirable size standard, the state maximum standard, followed by the current KSD guidelines. We do have guidelines as it relates to opening or closing a section. What you have in front of you will provide that information. First up, we'll start with Kaiser. As you can see, you will have the grade as well as the number of sections. Anytime you see anything in red, that will insinuate that class sizes that are highlighted are above the KSD class size guidelines. But again, we look at the total for that grade level before we decide to make a decision related to either opening an additional section or closing one. This is new information as it relates to virtual enrollment as of August the 23rd. It is a breakdown by the number of students in the correlating area. So for example, you will have one kindergartner at Kaiser, one second grader, and one fourth, I'm sorry, two fourth graders that are currently accessing learning through a virtual platform. Next, we have North Glendale with the same information. And you also have the virtual data in front of you as well. We're moving on to Robinson Elementary. Same data is present along with the virtual enrollment as of August the 23rd. Next up is Tillman. Again, same data, and you will see the virtual enrollment as of August the 23rd. And rounding out our elementary schools, you will have Westchester. Same data, and then you have the virtual data as of August the 23rd. This next slide that is in front of you, it provides an overall look at all of our elementary schools, and it will provide you with the number of sections as well as how many students are in that section. This is a comparison. This is a comparison from our last board meeting. Those data were pulled on July 20th compared to data that was pulled on August 25th. Again, both of which were pulled from Infinite Campus, and you will see the trend in front of you. For example, since the August, I'm sorry, since the July board meeting, Kaiser, as of August the 25th, up four students in kindergarten, four for first grade, and so on and so forth. Overall, you will see elementary schools since our July board meeting, we are up 51. If you are wanting to know what was the trend in July, then you will see in small font, it was plus 25 at that board meeting. Similarly, you will see a snapshot for all of our virtual enrollment. And again, it is based on our school as well as the grade level. As we transition into the secondary numbers, first up is Nifer. And you will also see the virtual enrollment as of August the 23rd. North Glendale, same information provided along with the virtual enrollment. And last but certainly not least, the high school. You will see the data along with the virtual enrollment. I will note that the enrollment was not provided as it relates to a breakdown for a particular grade, and so if you need that, I can certainly provide it. However, the total number you will see, 63, but that's broken down or disaggregated a little bit more. Seven of those are taking four-plus classes or virtual classes, and 59 students are taking either one or two virtual classes. As we look at a comparison at secondary, since our July board meeting in comparison with our August board meeting, you will see the trend data based off the secondary school as well as the grade. Since our July board meeting, we are up 10 students in secondary. And if we wanted to compare that from our time in July, we were up 17 at that time. Secondary virtual enrollment. And just a few notes. No sections have been added since the last board meeting based on actual enrollment data in Infinite Campus as of August the 25th, 2021. I will note that on some slides you were seeing August the 25th, that is the actual enrollment. But when we are looking at the virtual enrollment, that data was last provided on the 23rd. And so that's the reason why you will see August 25th reference through Infinite Campus, but you will also see the 23rd as it relates to virtual numbers. However, we are paying close attention to those four sections that you will see in red, that being Kaiser, third grade, North Glendale, kindergarten, North Glendale, fourth grade, as well as Westchester, first grade. I will yield back over to Dr. Ulrich to facilitate any questions.
Okay, board members, at this time, does anyone have any questions? Mr. Frost?
Thank you, Madam President. Dr. Fields, thank you very much for presentation. The, so you mentioned the, the red areas, the ones in North Glendale, and you said you're paying close attention. Do we already have a contingency plan for if, in fact, we do need to flip that switch to another section?
Absolutely. Great question. We've been in contact with the principal of the building, and we are constantly monitoring it to see if in fact we have to move forward hiring someone. This, the good thing, I'm guessing, is that this isn't anything new in terms of enrollment, especially as we look to related to the September months.
Dr. Fields, I'm gonna ask you to, I'm gonna ask you, wait, there's a, there's an issue that we need to have reconciled.
Right. Um, it's important that our public is public right now and remains in the public seat and not interrupt. This is our, our meaning and some thinking. Sorry, Dr. Fields.
Oh, no, you're fine, I'm sorry.
No, 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 you're good.
So what I was saying was, I guess the good thing is this is not considered a newer dynamic meeting. We are right on the cusp of opening or closing a section, and so communications key, having that communication with the building principal, and then determining if in fact we need to hire someone, doing everything we can to make sure we procure an outstanding candidate in front of our students.
Thank you very much. And, and Dr. Field, know that if you, if something that you need, or if there's anything you need to reach out to the board for, and I'm sure I won't speak for the board, but I'm sure you'll have for, for any resources or anything you may need, if that happens.
Absolutely, thank you.
Yeah, and I think what you're saying, even if it happens in between meetings, because some, sometimes, you know, all of a sudden those things sneak up in between meetings.
Great point, and I do want to remind us at the last board meeting, that very same thing occurred when we were at Kaiser. And so even though I was recording the numbers, we did wind up opening a section, so we do appreciate the support. And so even though I was reporting the numbers, we did wind up opening a section. So we do appreciate the support.
Okay. Miss Sharon.
Thank you for the report. Just a quick question. I know we spoke about it at the last meeting about how the virtual students were being educated by. Is it launched for elementary as well? Okay. But do they have the option like at the high school with the Kirkwood teachers with the program?
Yes, we do. We have, we have just a few classes that are being offered to our students by Kirkwood teachers asynchronously. So not during the school day, but asynchronously. The, in fact, we were just talking about one of those today. It's PE is one of those classes that we do. Personal finance is another one that we're offering. However, other classes that aren't ready for us, although our, our high school is ramping those up. And we'll have more and more offerings over the next couple of years where we don't have those offerings prepared there. Students are directed towards launch if they want to stay virtual.
Ms. Benardi.
Well, and I just wanna follow up on the virtual students, Dr. Fields. I noticed that, I believe there were 17 elementary virtual students. Are they included in your totals then? And also then are they all in the same virtual class that we know they're taught at different schools?
So I'll speak to the latter piece and then I'll come back to the former. I would defer over to Dr. Painter, who has the information in terms of breakdown as a base to virtual and accessing our curriculum. As it relates to the total numbers, the total numbers are what's in Infinite Campus. So those are all of our students. And so for instance, I'm making this up hypothetically, we have 100 students in a particular school in a particular grade. Of those 100 students, X amount are virtual. And so they're still comprised of our grand total that we're looking at and we're calculating. But in other words, we have to subtract those out as it relates to them being in version.
Thank you. For your staff, you can put, subtract them out. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, and you can have Dr. Ulrich answer the question.
Well, I think there are questions for answer. Yes.
Okay, perfect.
One thing I did want to say, we were asked a question by a board member and I provided the information to the board members, to the all board members in my board update on Friday. But just to make sure that I take the opportunity to say this. Just as a comparison to where we were at our August 31st board meeting a year ago versus where we are today. The difference is in total, as reported, the numbers that were given to Dr. Fields. We are up plus a net of 59 students. So five nine students is, is what we are up in terms of overall enrollment in our district from a year ago at the start.
Thank you. Okay. Okay. And at this point, Dr. Fields, do you mind if we go on and have you do the, the update?
That's fine.
We're gonna, since Dr. Fields is here, we're gonna have him just roll right into Encompass resolution update. Dr. Ulrich, I'm gonna leave the floor to you.
All right. Well, thank you very much, President Andrews. And just as another follow up that we've had. For from our Encompass resolution report, as you know, on June 28th was the, what kind of quote unquote was the final report that was given to us. However, if you will recall, there were a couple of, I shouldn't say a couple, but there were some items that Encompass resolution felt like the district should follow up on. And so since we have done that, I, I asked Dr. Fields to come back and give another update to the Board of Education. And you won't forgive Dr. Fields, but I did ask him to be very specific in the, in the number of interactions that we've had, including meetings. With representatives from Encompass resolution since the 28th. So the, the reason I asked him to do that is this Board of Education and our public. Has to be confident that we are following up and following through on the promises that we have made. With regard to the steps proactively we are taking as well as ensuring. That again, the goal of the, of the report, that we reached that goal, which is to ensure that all half the laws and policies were followed. At the time of any of these accusations. So having said that, I'll yield the floor to Dr. Fields.
Thank you, Dr. Irvin. Again, good evening, Board of Education, community and colleagues. On July 14th, 2020, the Kirkwood School District requested proposals for an independent assessment and investigation of district and school culture and climate. Related to the reporting and handling of allegations of sexual abuse, misconduct and inappropriate behavior. The overarching goals of this RFP was one, to identify and investigate whether there have been previously unreported incidents. Or failures to take prompt and appropriate action in response to complaints. Two, whether students, staff and parents have confidence in reporting and know to whom and how they may do so. Three, whether there was, whether there has been appropriate follow through in terms of consequences and supports. When complaints are substantiated. And four, equally important, to identify. Conduct training on and help implement strategies to promote a positive school climate and culture. At the end of the RFP process, which included processing the entire RFP. The superintendent recommended Encompass resolution as the winning bid. Encompass reported their final findings at the June 28th, 2001 board meeting. Included in their report were recommendations that the district has now acted, including. We are finalizing updated district-wide training that will include in-person workshops on sexual misconduct. And appropriate boundaries between adults and students. Every family with students in the district received a mailing title, Title IX, reporting abuse and misconduct. This mailing was in direct response to the recommendation from Encompass resolution to enhance awareness of. And access to policies for students and parents. The district has continued the work to provide specialized training to personnel responsible for investigating sexual misconduct. Abuse, allegation and has worked with outside entities to provide that training. And the district has also started the process to secure third-party services to improve the archiving of information. Records and investigations and ensure they will be more easily searched and accessed by appropriate personnel. The district has made aware, the district was made aware by Encompass. That there were still a few matters they were looking into beyond the June 28th board meeting. As a result, Encompass and the district were in communication on the following dates. July 6th, July 7th, July 14th, July 19th, July 20th, July 26th. July 27th, July 28th, August the 5th, August the 10th and August the 25th. It is important to note what was stated in an August the 26th communication to the KSD school community. That was in our quote. Any allegations regarding current personnel have been reviewed by Encompass resolution and the district. And have been resolved in accordance with applicable Kirkwood Board of Education policies and laws. We have also been in contact with law enforcement with regards to any open cases or allegations. There are no active open investigations into sexual abuse for any current staff in the Kirkwood School District. As stated in the original update that was provided on September the 26th, 2020. Upon completion of the investigation, KSD will work with Encompass to provide a report of the investigative findings. In a manner that is consistent with state and federal law and district policy. Protecting the confidentiality of student and personnel information. Again, the district fully cooperated with the requests made by Encompass. To complete their independent assessment and investigation. With that, I will turn it back over to Dr. Ulrich.
Thank you, Dr. Fields. At, at this time, board members, are there any questions? Ms. Ms. Benardi.
I just, I want to thank you, Dr. Fields, and I appreciate that update. I think the challenge is the communication to the community as well as the parents and people in the district. So I very much appreciate everything you said. And I hope that the community can hear you and that we can move forward with sending out that information.
The other. Okay. Thank you, Dr. Fields. Okay. Moving on now to 4.03 Turner Building.
Thanks, and President Andrews, and it's Mike, excuse me, Mr. Romei. It's settled. I will say it's very exciting for us as, as we come to the. Really, no pun intended, but the closing of, of our, of our opportunity with the Turner Building. We certainly have been shouting this from the rooftops. This opportunity really doesn't come along very often. In terms of a, for a school board and a school district. And so Mr. Romei has some information that he wants to share with you to ensure the board and our community has all the information. As this will be an action item for later on in the meeting. Mr. Romei.
Yes, good evening, everyone. On August 16th, the Board of Education approved a proposal from Clayton Holdings. A subsidiary of Commerce Bank for a 10-year, 1.24% fixed rate lease financing transaction to pay for a portion of the J Milton Turner Building. Currently, we expect to occupy about 25% of the office space in the building. That's what's available at the moment. And the proposed rate is a tax exempt rate. Meaning that the district can borrow up to 25% of the purchase price, which is equivalent to the space that we would occupy. And that comes at $875,000. The district's reserves will be used to pay the balance due on the purchase. The reserves or our fund balance will be replenished over the term of the lease financing from the rental income earned from the tenants' relation to the building. I am recommending that the board approve a resolution authorizing the district to enter into lease financing transactions pulling $875,000. With Clayton Holdings for the purchase of the J Milton Turner Building. Our attorneys from Gilmore and Bell drafted the resolution and all of the lease documents.
Okay, board members, this is the time. If you have any questions? Okay. Okay, seeing no questions. Thank you.
I already asked the question, Mr. Romei, and my question was that we had approved up to 1.7 million for financing. And he very carefully explained that because of the 25%, well, because it's such a low rate. That that is the only question that we're able to do at this rate, which I think is a really good financial decision for our district. So thank you. My, my question was already answered, thank you.
Okay, so this will be an action item down, down the road. But seeing no further questions, thank you again, Mr. Romei. Okay, Dr. Ulrich, anything further? Okay, moving on. By to 5.01, approval of consent agenda. Do I have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda for August 30th, 2021, regular meeting, please raise your right hand and say aye. All those opposed, motion to approve the consent agenda passes. And next up, Mr. Romei, financial and, financial reports and budget. Dr. Ulrich.
Run over, Mr. Romei. Thank you. Operating revenues in July were $901,584 and that consists of Prop C. Sales tax and state revenue. Operating expenses in July were $2,137,000. And that mainly consists of salaries and benefits. In our technology fund, we received a down payment of $662,796 for the sale of used iPads. Additional funds are expected once the iPads have been graded by the company and after the summer school iPad or since. And if you recall, the board approved a bid in May from Total Technologies to sell 4, 4,800 of the used iPad.
Okay, do I have a motion in a second to approve the financial report for period one, July 2021?
So.
Okay. Okay, are there any questions? Seeing no questions, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor of approving the financial report for July. One, 2021 to 2022, please raise your right hand and say aye. All those opposed, motion to approve the financial report passes. Okay, moving on to new business, 7.01, approval of lease financing. Resolution for the J Milton Turner Building. Do I have a motion in a second?
Second.
Okay, you got, you got that. This age, you're gonna have to figure that one out. Okay, okay. Okay, so are there any questions at this time? Mr. Boyko.
Not really a question, but I do have a comment. I think not at the right time to just say, with respect to the Turner Building as a whole. You know, oftentimes we're in a situation where the easiest thing to do is to do nothing. And I really appreciate that Sanders, that the superintendent and staff have done a very good job. Being willing to act, not just willing to act, but also willing to put in the time, the diligence. And the analysis necessary to make sure that there's a good way to, I think, visit towards that relationship.
Thank you, Mr. Boyko. Okay, so any other, any other? Okay. So seeing no further, I will ask for the vote. All those in favor of approving the. Hold on guys, approving the lease revenue resolution, financing resolution, please raise your right hand and say aye. All those opposed, motion passes. This is very exciting. Mr. Romei and Mark, I couldn't have said it better. So I'm not gonna say it. I'm just gonna say, I get what Mark said. So moving on now to future events. Kind of crazy. So we have Labor Day holiday. The district is closed on Monday. Then the district has on Tuesday a SAC development day, so there are no students. So. Parents, remember, don't send your kids to school on Tuesday. And then on September 13th, we have a work session. And then on September 19, 18th, we have the Green Tree Parade. So everyone can join us on September 20th. We have tax rate hearing on September 27th, regularly scheduled board meeting. And then on September 29th, we have Unified Lights. Formerly known as Friday Night Lights. And I just want to speak that this is a, Dr. Ulrich. We have had this in the past, but it is a night to bring all students and all abilities together. It's really a fun evening. So I really encourage everyone to go to that. And then on September 30th, we have our board retreat. Okay, so there is a need for closed session. Do I have a motion and second to go into closed session? Okay, so we'll go by roll call though. Ms. Benardi. Mr. Boyko. Mr. Frost. Mr. Kavanaugh. Ms. Pangborn. Miss Sharon. And myself, yes. I call this meeting adjourned. If you guys want to take a two-minute break, five-minute break, and then, yeah, we'll, we'll be back in here. Thanks, guys.
We're back at 7:55.
Oh, sorry, Mary, I just got.